Mayor Canos?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Ms. McCready is absent. Mr. McQueen is absent. Mr. O'Day?
Here.
Ms. Amara?
Here.
Okay, notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News Courier News and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020, and revised on October 10th, 2020. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Right? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We do not have any presentations, so I will now open the public session. If anyone from the public would like to be heard, please do a hand raise so we know that you're would like to speak at this point. I am not seeing any. So I will close the public session. We are continuing the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1864 requiring recorded deed declarations for private stormwater management facilities and supplementing and amending chapter 12 of the Borough Code entitled "Zoning." So I will open the public hearing on that if anyone would like to speak. Oh, I see Jeff Price is connecting. Chad, you want to just go over, we talked about this in housing?
Yeah, we did quite a bit. I'm not sure we came to a complete resolution because there's quite a few differences of opinions. I know we got some comments from the planning board about this particular ordinance, particularly moving it so it was going forward. There's a lot of concern, I'll sort of speak personally, but also, you know, there was a lot of concern at the zoning board in regards to this being related to the deed.
All right, planning board or zoning board, Chad?
The zoning, housing and zoning board.
Oh, sorry, got it.
Yeah, so there were two sets of comments. There were comments that were in writing, Tom, that were attached in our packet from the planning board.
Right.
I saw those.
And then we also had a discussion at the Housing and Zoning Enforcement Group, and there were equal concerns about this being a relationship to the deed. Now, the issue here, frankly, and I feel for Jeff and Renee, and I don't know if Jeff is there, you know, there is an ordinance on the books which is, let me give a little background. It is more stringent than state rules in regard to a yearly reporting mechanism for the stormwater management drywells. So we have an ordinance on the books that's more, that is stricter than the state. We do not have any enforcement teeth to make sure that folks comply to this yearly filing of a report for their stormwater management. So the recommendation here is that it actually becomes, and I'm gonna, I may use slightly inprecise language, but Jeff, if you need to make me more precise, please do. It's a deed, it's a deed link in regards to the presence of these stormwater management systems. My personal opinion, and I'm inserting my personal opinion, is that we go, we should actually, instead of doing this and relate it to the deed, is revise the initial ordinance and make it consistent with the state. So I'm not sure that this is a resolved issue, and I don't know how everybody else feels, but this one seems to be a challenging one.
What would the state require? If we, if we did what you suggest and revised the ordinance, what would it then require?
It is my understanding, and Jeff, you brought this up at the meeting, so again, if you can be more precise, that would help, that the state does not require yearly reporting of the stored water management wells.
What does the reporting, what do you, what do you report on?
You have to, you're supposed to actually check it and make sure it's operating properly.
It's a little bit like, you know, having your sewer maintained.
And I saw, he was here, Jeff Price, where did he go?
Where did he go?
It would be helpful if he would explain, you know, if he could explain to you the reasoning behind the, this. And this is going forward, it's not trying to catch up people. It's any new construction that puts in a drywell so that it's tied to the deed, so when they sell it, the next owner knows that this is on their property.
But that's not clear in the way the ordinance is written now, and that was one of the planning board's concerns.
Yes.
So does that, wait, I'm now confused. So does the language that we're voting on tonight, does that clear things up? Does that make it?
No.
It does not. Jeff conceded to the, to the statement of the planning board in his notes that he agreed that this should be a going-forward issue, not a going-backwards issue.
Right.
Why are we voting on something that we're unsure that we like?
Well, I don't think we should.
Yeah, I don't think we should either.
Why we were continuing the public hearing, I think it was, I think Jeff brought it forward last week, and then it raised some questions, so we said we would take it to the Housing and Zoning Committee for their input as well, and then, but it has to stay on the agenda since we're extending the.
So my question would be, is this gonna be ready for our next December meeting? If not, then we should just?
Then we let it go.
Yeah.
I think we let it go. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to get worked out. I mean, there was, I don't think a final consensus at the planning board. I mean, I said on both of these meetings, on both of these committees, there are.
I'm happy to say, let's bring it back when we get aligned viewpoints. Even if we have two sec, two different viewpoints, and we have to choose between them, but right now, it doesn't even sound like we have two clear options.
I think there's a part of it, Tom, I think we need to provide some guidance to Jeff in regards to our feeling about this issue. Because, you know, I understand his position where he is in a place where he cannot enforce a ordinance, which we have on the books, right? I get that.
We need to resolve that regardless.
But if we don't, so we have to do either or.
And then here comes, Jeff is coming back in, so why don't we let him?
Yeah, but we're out of time for this year, that's the problem.
Yep.
Yeah, if we don't get it worked out.
If it's not urgent, I'm, if it's not urgent, I'm happy to say, let's just start all over again in January.
I don't think this is an urgent issue. I think this is Jeff trying, doing his job well and trying to make sure that all of the ordinances on the books are enforceable.
Yeah, but I would say the same, and I don't know that we should spend any more time on it now, anyway.
Well, unless there's something that Jeff needs to tell us about, you know, so that we can give him direction. Is there, if there's something that, that's required for us to give direction on, that would be the only reason to talk about it anymore, even another minute tonight.
I think the only thing is this position about.
Let me let Jeff talk. Jeff.
Good evening, sorry about that. A bit of technical difficulty. The, the only thing is, is that we are trying to ensure that after a sale of a house that has stormwater, that the new owners are aware of it, and the only way to do that is with this deed restriction. To answer one of Chad's questions from Thursday, that would make us over and above what the state requires.
Yeah, but Jeff, do you need any direct, do you need any direction from council regarding this? Because we're, we're probably, what we said before you joined was that we're probably not gonna come to resolution on this before, you know, for the next meeting, and so we have to start all over in January. But it, and so we were just gonna kind of let it go, but if you need any direction or, you know, anything from the council, then we'll, you know, we can continue to talk about it, otherwise, we'll just move on.
Right, and that's fine. It can wait till next year.
Okay, so Jack, what do we do? Just table it?
No, you can't table it because you can't carry it over to the next year.
So what do we?
If it doesn't get moved in second, it, it just dies in the vine, so you can't do that. Can I just ask one, Jeff, one question? Because Jeff, you were offline for part of the discussion. A part of the discussion was that there's no consensus on what this ordinance should say tonight. Are you in agreement that the, the ordinance needs revision before we can consider it?
I, I thought the language spoke to what the need is.
So, I mean, that's a little bit of a, I'm not quite clear on the message, because you weren't on earlier when Chad was describing some of the concerns that were brought forward by the planning board and the Housing and Zoning Board, but they were saying that this, as it stands, is not recommended that we would pass something like this. But that's not the message I'm hearing from you, Jeff.
No, and maybe there should be some clearer language stating that this isn't going backwards, it's only going forwards, and I think that was the main issue.
And that was the main issue, Jeff, so it's the back, it's the going-forward revision, and then it's whether or not one of two things happen, right? Because we need to make sure that all of our laws are enforceable. We either conform with the state and we don't require it, or we go with a deed, a deed piece like you're recommending. So I think that, you know, there's two issues that's, is it consistent with the going forward? And Jack doesn't think it is at this point. And then number two, what is the right solution for how we're going to do this going forward? And I don't think there's a consensus there yet.
And there was also a question about the annual reporting, so that I think we need to look at too. So let's let this go, and we'll revisit it in January, get the line, work on the language a little bit, and bring it back, all right?
So whose, whose job will it be to write it, to bring it back? Will that be the Housing and Zoning Advisory Committee? Will that be the planning board? Who's gonna rewrite it?
It'll be Jeff, I think, in consultation with Jack.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and I'll confer with engineering and get the language appropriate.
And Jeff, I think.
One at a time?
Jeff, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say, and Jeff, I was, I was gonna say, suggest, census is an issue with enforcement in very, you know, in a lot of ways, I think it should probably come through that committee before it comes here. One more time.
That's fine.
I, I think we need to put it in plain language so people can understand it, because to tell you the truth, I'm not sure I understand it.
Uh-oh, all right. Then we will.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so now I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1865, an ordinance appropriating $45,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for repairs and improvements to the municipal pool complex. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? You can either raise your hand on the participant screen or signal somehow. I think we can see everybody, so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Gina, would you like to move this?
Sure. I move to pass ordinance 2020-1865 on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1866, removing the designation of Bernard's Avenue as a through street, designating certain Bernard's Avenue intersections as stop intersections, and supplementing and amending chapter seven of the Borough Code entitled "Traffic." And this is more of a housekeeping, because we added the stop sign on Bernard's Ave, so you have to, we have to re-designate what that street is. So anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Hammond, would you like to move that?
Sure.
Dr. Hammond?
Either way, I move to pass ordinance 2020-1866 on final reading and adopt as published.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1867, and ordinance permitting open signs in the downtown district and supplementing and amending Article 12 of the Borough Land Use Regulation entitled "Zoning."
This is another one we're carrying until next year for further study. And then he had to put it down because it was introduced.
Okay, so we're gonna let this one go as well.
Mayor, do you want me to provide any context on what the, the plan is going forward, or just let it go?
If you'd like.
I'll just give a quick update. So, obviously, for our conversation a couple of weeks ago, this went to the planning board, it also went back to the Housing and Zoning Enforcement Committee. The signed ordinances written going forward was carefully considered and highly supported as is by the planning board. However, I think the, the essence of what we were trying to do was to solve a problem for existing signs in the borough. After discussion at the planning, with the planning board, some discussions on the side with Jack, I think we have a better solution, which is through a resolution to permit existing open signs in the borough, which is something that we'll bring back after the first of the year.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll let that one go. Dr. Hammond, would you like to move ordinance, the next ordinance for the captain position?
Surely, thank you. I move that ordinance 2020-1868, creating one new captain position and eliminating one lieutenant position in the police department, and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled "Administration," be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Monday, December 28, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we will have the public hearing at the next meeting.
What happens if we change that December 28 date? Occasionally, we have done that at the end of the year. Does, is this still valid?
What do you mean, if we don't have the public hearing on December 28?
No, if we decided to have it on, on the 27th, or this 26th, or some other date, will it still be okay since we passed this, with that specific date?
No, we, we should probably decide now whether we're gonna leave that meeting on the 28th, because Dr. Hammond's right, in the past, sometimes we've moved it to a morning meeting just to close out the year. But if we put in the notice that it's, the public hearing's on the 28th, then we can't adopt if it's on another date. It's fine if you want to go ahead on the 28th, but, but we have in the past changed it on occasion.
I mean, I don't have a problem with our regular meeting on the 28th at 7:00. Does anybody have a problem with that time and date?
Because it's between the holidays, if we didn't have, we don't have a heavy lift on the 28th, I could be had to like switch it to a morning, 28th of the morning, just so we have a free up to evening, because, you know, not that we doing much these days, but, you know, I might do something with the family.
Do we have a line site to how much it's gonna be on the agenda, Anthony?
No, I really don't have too much, there will be these two ordinances, and I think that there's something from Fergus Associates, a resolution. That's really about all, and a bill list, probably some transfers, resolutions. That's really all I have right now.
So we're not talking about a four-hour meeting?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Well, unless we have something in an executive session that we cannot anticipate at this moment. I mean, I'm all in favor. I'm in favor of leaving it for the evening, because if it's, if it's not gonna be a heavy lift, it'll be over pretty quickly in the evening as well.
Yeah.
Well, Jack, can we even change the time on the fly like this? Well, you can, because we have time to give notice.
Yeah.
Maybe we can. You can change it if you wish.
What's the notice time?
Forty-eight hours.
All right, so maybe, you know, middle of next week, we kind of make a, you know, mem there, gather a consensus, maybe?
Yeah, but we have to, but the notice, the ordinance notice of public hearing has to be accurate.
Right.
That's why it needs to be decided tonight. This thing, the night has to be correct, John.
Can we take a straw poll, Mayor, in regards to attendance next week?
For the evening?
Yeah.
I'm at 7:00 o'clock, just how many people are okay with that?
I am.
I'm good.
I'll do the morning, but I'll go along.
Yeah.
I can do the, I can do the morning as well, but I mean, you, you answered that question.
I can do the morning, the morning's preferable for me, too.
Easier for the public, because that's usually our public meeting, where if people want to comment, we have two public sessions. I don't know, I'd rather leave it at night and not confuse people.
Well, not only that, people might still be working, so if, if we're interested in public attending, I don't think we should schedule it during a workday.
No, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that, and it passed away.
Let's, but let's have a commitment, you know, that none of us are gonna stuff on any more, any more ordinances. We'll keep off this mandatory, and we'll call it a, we'll call it a holiday.
Well, we can't introduce any more ordinances, because we won't be the second meeting.
No. So you, did we have a second? I think.
I'll second.
Yeah, we did. It was a chat second.
Yes.
Okay, and all in favor?
We all voted.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm not sure where this one came from for the new fees. Was this from Glenn Miller?
This came from Glenn Miller, yes.
Yeah, I had a similar question.
Is he here tonight? I don't see him.
I don't see him, but I can, I can fill in some blanks for you.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, we, last year, as you may recall, we started a quote-unquote "shared service" with Bernard's Township for fire prevention.
Right.
And it was very successful, and we want to continue that in 2021. So one of the first steps is to realign our fire prevention fees with that of Bernard's Township. And this is an ordinance that's attempting to do that.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense. So that our, and a lot of it was the sizes, I noticed, that changed.
Right, yeah, yeah, the businesses are billed based on their square footage.
Right.
That's where they have a little difference in the way they grade the square footages. They have different tiers, and we're trying to just accommodate that.
Got it. Okay, Chad, do you want to move that ordinance?
Sure, I have to go back here. I move that ordinance 2020-1869 concerning fire prevention fees and amending chapter 15 of the Borough Code entitled "Fire Prevention," be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM, Monday, December 28, 2020.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we now have resolutions 2285 through 2305.
Yeah, this is gonna take a minute, because there were a lot of them.
Yeah.
I would like to pull out or ask about 299 to 301, because they were all about the shared court. And then I have a question about 303, maybe just send more of an explanation from Jack. And then, and 304, which is the redevelopment north.
Right, okay.
I'd like to pull out 291. 300, I think, Gina, you already mentioned that. 303.
Yes, I think she mentioned that as well.
Okay, that was it.
Anybody else?
I just had a question about 293, so we already have this shared service. We have to renew that every year, is that the idea behind 293?
It was a short-term one now, right? Is this, this was to get us through?
March, March, the end of March, I think it was. Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
And then, and then, did, did you pull out, Gina, the rare, the bridge issue?
No, I did not.
Where's the bridge?
The route to.
That's not a revolution, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's an item of business or something.
New business, okay, sorry, I went too far in my agenda. Yes, I'm good, that's 6C, you're correct.
Okay, so let's, let's start with 291. That was the joint agreement for the New Jersey American Water, and I believe Bernard's Township, not Bernard, Bedminster provided a letter of explanation as to how that came to be and why it's, it's what it cost. And I know one of the attorneys who actually lives in Bed, is a resident of Bedminster, also did $25,000 worth of pro bono work on that, because he's a resident and he cared about it, so. I don't know, any, who's, somebody?
The question that was raised last, last meeting when we discussed this was, we voted to approve this based on having one more municipality involved, and apparently that municipality withdrew, leaving us with a higher bill. And the question I raised, and I think others did as well, is, are they allowed, can they do that? Since we, you know, kind of all committed to a certain cost.
Yeah, they, they explained that in the letter.
This is more about principle than this dollars.
Yeah, but hang on, Chad, because they, they explained it in their letter. If you, if you had a chance to read it, it said they were never actually in, so they couldn't withdraw.
And then they added two more, they added Raritan Borough, I think, and Raritan Township.
I, I read the letter, I didn't fully understand, though, about the, they can or they can't, and the Raritans, the two Raritans were in the original proposal.
I thought they added them, the way the letter read.
Yeah, the, the letter read it that way, I don't, I don't recall.
Well, if you go back and look at it, they, they were there. I know, because I looked up the population of all these towns to see if it was all equitable. I mean, we're all gonna approve it, I just, I just, I just don't think this was the, which, which, I don't know, maybe I missed it, I don't know which of the municipalities withdrew. I don't think that's really fair to everybody else.
I think it was only Bernard's Township, and they never actually signed on. They expressed interest in the beginning, but from what the letter said, they never actually committed.
So they're gonna get the benefit of us paying for it.
All the towns are, all the towns in Somerset County, well, I mean, in.
Yeah. The letter called them the Free Riders.
Yeah.
Which we could have opted to do, but we didn't, we, we opted to join, but we did opt to join at, I think it was 4,700, and now our bill is 9,200.
That's twice as much.
But we're saving our residents one every year, so.
Actually, our contract was directly with the law firm. And it said the contractor shall be paid for an amount not to exceed $2,800 unless increased by the governing body. That's the last thing I see.
Yeah, I think the original thing they gave us.
Then we had a several, I'm sorry, with, with the engineers, our Exeter Associates, for $1,400.
Yeah, that was where the 448 or something came from.
But it wasn't really a shared services agreement, we had, we had an individual, we had individual contracts with the two firms.
I mean, at the end of the day, I think we did a good thing for residents, so I'm not, it's not the money, it's more the principle of the way that this went down, it just is not.
You know, don't get me wrong, Chad, I mean, I think, I agree with, I think we did a very good thing for the residents, but we're doing a good thing for residents of other municipalities on, on our dime and on our, you know, residence tax money. And I don't know whether we brought this up with those other towns with whom we have shared services in other areas, that this was an unfair practice.
I mean, is it all, who, where the, where did the Free Riders come from? Is it all of Somerset County?
Anyone who didn't pay for any of the legal expense to get the win.
Oh, I know, but just in, in Somerset County or in all of New Jersey?
I think it's all of New Jersey, I think this was in New Jersey.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's all New Jersey American Water customers.
Yeah. So we did a good service for the state.
But, I mean, and I agree, I don't like the way this went down, so I agree with Dr. Hammond on that. But, you know, ultimately, we incurred some taxpayer expense, and on the other hand, we're saving all of our taxpayers' money, too, on their water bill, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So hopefully, it's a net gain to the town residents, you know?
Yeah, I think it said something like, I don't know, $93,000 in the letter for the 9,200 that we're paying, something like that, so, I mean, yes.
I move to change Free Riders to Free Riders.
Okay, the next one you had a question on was 299, appointing a municipal court judge.
I was just wondering, in general, they were all kind of all of the same spirit. It was the judge, the prosecutor, and the public defender.
Right.
And I was just wondering if these were new appointees, do we usually have any say in this? I just wasn't sure how this usually works.
Yes, I could, I could help with that. Anthony and I are the representatives, there's a meeting held at the end of the year, each year. RFPs for the prosecutor and the public defender go out. They're only from year to year. The, so there's RFPs that go out every year for them. The judge, on the other hand, has a three-year term, and her three-year term was up this year, along with the prosecutor and the public defender. And Anthony and I attended a meeting between all four towns, representatives from all four towns, and we, there was, there were some other people that applied for these jobs, not for the judge's job, but for prosecutor and public defender, and their fees were higher than what we had. And so the, the people that were in place for the last two years, I believe, were reappointed by, by that group. And so the, um, the people that were in place for the last, uh, two years, I believe, um, were reappointed by, by that group.
So, eh, eh, part of that process, Ralph, do you, as our administrator, do you interview these?
Yes, we got the, we got the resumes early on and, uh, looked through them, and, um, yeah.
And you're, so you would, your recommendation as, as administrator is that you, this is a high-quality person that you'd want to retain services for?
Yes, and we also, um, you know, we've got, uh, if there's negative feedback from any of the, um, police departments that work with these people on a continuous basis, that's also brought up at these meetings. And there was, uh, you know, there was no such, such, uh, pos, you know, no, no probability of that happening this time, there was no, no, no hard, harsh words for anybody.
Jeff, I don't know if Jeff is still there, have we had any issues with enforcement of our violations in recent past that has been troubling?
Certainly, uh, not, no, not in the last 12 months.
Okay.
All right, are we good on those three?
I'm good, yeah.
I am, thank you for, for that opportunity.
Okay, I think 20303, um, John, I think you brought that forward. Do you want to talk about that one, the, um, about the fair affordable housing?
Yeah, so I'll introduce it, then Jack can sort of like, you know, speak knowledgeably about it, basically. It, it, affordable housing is governed by the courts here, and it really belongs to the legislature, but in my opinion, the legislature, and a lot of people's opinions, is basically, uh, ducking out of the responsibility, and this is pretty much calling on the legislature to, calling to stop, you know, I guess, affordable housing, you know, uh, enforcement until the legislature steps in appropriately. And Jack, you can correct anything I might have misspoken about, but Jack wrote this for Long Hill, and they adopted it, it was sent to me, and I, I thought it was a fantastic statement, at least on our part, and, uh, you know, Jack, you can take it away and maybe share some more insight on this.
Yeah, I, I, I wrote the ordinance as a request of the Long Hill mayor, I did not bring it to Burnersville, I believe they distributed it to every municipality in the state. And the idea is, as John said, that, uh, it's asking that the legislature take back affordable housing. Uh, the reason the Supreme Court stepped in in 2015 and placed this latest round on us is because COA had gone dormant. No appointments had been made, and, uh, in fact, the, the Supreme Court in 2015 asked the legislature to please pass legislation and bring it back. And, and the reason is, when we had COA, at least we had a number that was assigned to each municipality. We had clear rules that set forth how we could meet those obligations. Uh, this last round, uh, the court assigned 15 different Mount Laurel judges, uh, each one of them had their own rules, and they had to decide the number for each town. Uh, it cost Burnersville tens of thousands of dollars, uh, just to participate in the consortium with other municipalities, and, and it really was chaotic. Uh, so I don't think it's a partisan kind of issue. It, it's not taking a stand on affordable housing, it's just asking the legislature and the governor to do their job and take back responsibility for it. Like I said, the court, the court has asked them to do that.
And, and that's the rub to me, it's like, there's no accountability, there's no where we can go to complain, because it's, they're hiding behind the courts. Uh, so, I mean, legislatures, you know, this is why we get the big bucks, right, to sort of make these hard decisions and take accountability, and they're not doing that, and this is sort of asking them to, to step up.
John, have you had any conversations with Aura Dunn about this? I, I, I fully support this, I think it's a brilliant idea, but have you had any discussions at the state level?
No, not recently, I talked to her a couple of functions, but it's just sort of been passing, not, you know, you know, it's, I think, it's, it's on the radar, I think it got close under Christie, uh, but some, for whatever reason, it didn't, it didn't carry, I'm not sure why.
So, so Jack, you just mentioned, though, that the courts have asked the legislature to do this, now, if the court's asking, how come it wasn't done?
Well, because the courts can't make them do it, and, and I think John may be right, it's easy for the legislature to say, we're not doing this, you know, it's the courts.
Well, we're gonna pass a resolution demanding, I think the language was, it demanded that they do this, which of course has no teeth, so this is gonna make us feel, but nothing's gonna happen, is that what you're saying?
Actually, demand wasn't in my original version, Long Hill mayor put that in.
It's a statement of intent and desire and like frustration with, you know, sort of lack of clarity and the capriciousness of this whole approach.
I, I mean, I think, I think Mayor Ray's idea was that if every town in the state or a number of towns in the state, you know, adopt this resolution, it may be the legislature will get the message.
And I'm wondering if, you know, Mayor, uh, Mayor, I know that you're part of the, the Mayors for Main Street organization. You know, if we pass this tonight, we get it to the Mayors for Main Street, we pass it up through our, you know, Auras, who's one of our representatives, maybe we, we spur some action.
Yeah, and Senator Bucow as well, I think. I seen, uh, Tom, go ahead, wants to say something.
Well, I have a clarifying question, because I heard Councilman Donahue use the words, or it sounded like he said, uh, stop enforcement, or tell them to stop enforcement, until something, the legislature takes, that, that's not what I understood this says, uh, Jack, when we spoke about it.
But, but it's, it's asking the courts to stop, you know, imposing it on towns until there's legislation that clarifies what the obligation is and what the numbers are.
But we're talking about 2025 and beyond, or are we talking about next week?
Talking about 2025 and beyond, because COA comes in, in 10-year rounds now.
Right, I just wanted to clarify, because it was, I, I thought the discussion was a little bit confusing for me. So what we're saying is that, that either the courts are gonna have to do something for 2025 and beyond, or the legislature has to do something for 2025 or beyond.
We're asking the legislature to step up and do it, you know.
Understood, but it, but it's not for what we're...
The cake we're baking now, no, we can't, that's, that's in the oven.
Okay.
What I tried to do, I tried to go through the whole history and the preamble. The, the only thing the, the resolution is asking for is that it demands the governor and the legislature cease their unconscionable disregard, and like I said, a lot of, some of this is Mayor Ray's language, this regard to this most important provision of the state constitution, and take immediate and decisive action to restore a viable administrative remedy that municipalities can use in satisfaction of their constitutional obligations to provide affordable housing.
Well, you know, I, I just want to agree wholeheartedly, for the record, with, uh, Councilman McQueen, that we need to engage, um, our, our legislators, Assemblywoman Dunn and Senator Bucow, but I would also engage our preholders, who were soon going to be called commissioners, because I know this is something that has been of interest to Sarah Sui, and, uh, maybe perhaps that the county legislators can, uh, can work on it from their end as well. So I, I, I would, I would pepper everybody at the level above us with this.
Yeah.
Because actually, COA, COA came about because Governor Kane at the time lobbied for it. After Mount Laurel II, the, the Supreme Court, uh, in that case, also suggested to the legislature they adopt an administrative remedy, and Governor Kane lobbied for it, and COA came into existence, and as I say, it worked, it worked pretty well, towns knew what the rules were and, and how to meet their obligations.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for the explanation on that one. Um, next, we're at 20304, um, and I believe Chris Colley is here, I know there's been some last-minute changes to the RFP, um, which Anthony, you have the latest, I just emailed you the latest copy, because there were several drafts.
I just forwarded it, yeah.
Okay, so, um, Chris, would you like to just update us on where we are with the RFP?
Sure.
And Chris, sorry, if you could also just call out the changes that have been made since the version that we had in our packet?
From Friday?
It's like, we literally just got it right now, so...
Yeah, understood, sorry about that. Um, sure, I'd be happy to, uh, thanks for, thanks for letting me come tonight, nice to see everybody again. So what you have, I'll give you a little just blurb overview, and then I'll, I'll, I'll hit on those changes specifically. What you have is an RFP that I, I think, like, does a pretty good job at setting forth the borough's expectations for this process, laying out a pretty clear process, um, for people to respond to, and kind of like, um, strikes a balance between requiring the developers to submit a lot of information without being, um, overly burdensome, um, and at, with an aggressive but not unreasonable, uh, timeline. So I'll just, I'll touch on the changes that were made since your last meeting, and then I'll touch on the changes that were made since the last version, that's okay. So since the last meeting, um, we, we really, we rewrote a lot of the purpose section to, to, to make it read more clearly, um, and to like more clearly lay out the borough's expectations and the borough's vision, especially around the public benefits. We, we clarified, like, who needs to submit and how much they need to submit, you know, one of the tricky things about this property and this plan is depending on where you're getting designated, um, you have different obligations, so we tried to clarify that. We added some additional evaluation criteria about the design and about the qualifications of the team, can talk about those if necessary. Um, and we added some additional submission requirements, um, relating to programming, uh, financial capacity of respondents, and also the, um, the specific public improvements. So that, that really takes us up to Friday. Um, in the version that you have in front of you now, um, which is, uh, um, the one that, that the councilwoman just, just referenced, so the changes in there are, uh, well, we fixed the date on the first page, but that's not important. Uh, we added a, a couple sentences in, in the paragraph that starts subsequently on October 30th. We added in this paragraph that says the redevelopment plan, which is included as attachment A, dot, 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 those next few sentences are, are new. Um, and then substantively, the last paragraph in that section, we added in a paragraph that, that specifically calls out the public benefits that the borough expects in one place, right up at the beginning, um, so a respondent or someone who's gonna view this document is very clear as to what the borough's expectations are in terms of public benefits. Uh, so that's where you see the five bullet points at the top of the second page, mind report, coin plaza, et cetera.
Is there a way to show that to us? For the, I mean, I haven't logged on...
Oh, redline?
That you just were referencing, can we see those five bullet points?
Oh, you know what, uh, Anthony, can you want to share it, and then everybody can see it?
Yeah.
Sure.
This is an important document.
I'll, I'll share the attachment, hang on.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at it on my phone.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at it on my computer and go back and forth. So I apologize if you see my bald spot.
Um, as Anthony pulls that up, I'll just touch on the other two changes, and we can go back to the start. Um, we, uh, we added a line in implementation approach, it's a description of strategy, if any, for relocating existing tenants, we added comma particularly the post office, United States Post Office. Um, and then the last change that we made was, there was a sentence in the evaluation criteria about, about buildings that are three stories. You know, there was some talk when the plan was adopted about three versus four, all other things being equal, I think the borough would prefer three. But we added a sentence, we sort of rephrased a sentence that now says, "The borough will look favorably upon projects that limit building height to three stories while providing the public improvements required in the plan." So once Anthony's got, has that up, I can, um, oh, there it is.
It's up there, I'm, I'm not sure which page you want me to, uh, have up there.
Uh, scroll up a little bit, Anthony.
Anthony, this is the one that's in the current drop box in the agenda, right? Just to make sure, I, I think...
No.
No.
Box.
Okay.
No, this is the updated version. It's in your email now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just emailed it, yeah.
So Anthony, if you just want to scroll up just slightly more, so we can just see the sentence that leads into that, there we go. Yeah, so this whole, this paragraph has just been expanded upon to clearly lay out those, those public improvements. I don't think any of these five points should be new to anyone, um, but I'll...
Well, it's, it's, it's more the language than the new concept, but it was, what it says, "Affordable housing sufficient to fulfill the obligation." Are we're saying, are we saying that they have to do the totality of the affordable housing that we're obligated for?
Um, no, what we're saying there is that they need to provide the 15% as specified in the plan.
I think it was 12 units.
It doesn't say that, it says sufficient to fulfill the obligation, which implies all of our affordable housing obligations.
I believe it's 12 units in the Quimby redevelopment area.
That's great, it's 12.
Jack, I didn't hear you, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I believe it's 12 affordable units in the Quimby redevelopment area.
And is that explained in the plan? Is that stated in the plan, what the obligation is?
I don't, I don't think it's specific in the plan, no, it's specific, you know, in our settlement, I mean, but not in the plan.
We say something affordable housing sufficient to fulfill the borough's obligation for this area, would that be more specific?
Yeah, I think that would, that would make sense. So what it says in the plan is, um, it says 15% need to be set aside, it says that is anticipated that a minimum of 80 residential units will be created, fulfilling the 12-unit obligation currently required under the...
Yeah, but let's pull that, that, pull that forward.
Well, why don't we just say 15%? Yeah, right there, that's, that's the number, right?
80 times 12, yep.
I mean, it's 15% of whatever your number is, so it could be 15% of 60, or it's 15% of 90, you know?
Yeah, but I think the expectation is it'll be a minimum of 12.
That's correct.
Affordable.
We should say 15% minimum 12.
Or can you say to fulfill the obligation detailed in the plan?
Yeah, that's a good way to say it, Mayor. As detailed in the plan. The sufficient to fulfill the borough's obligation as detailed in the plan.
Yeah, because this is just an invitation to submit a proposal.
Right. It doesn't have to restate everything.
That's a good suggestion, Mayor, I like that idea.
Is that okay?
Well, the parking, um, I, I know what you're, what you're meaning, but is this, uh, is this, what it says, using the natural slope of the topography hidden from view, is that mandating that it be underground?
No. I think that's why...
No, so, you know, the parking, what the plan, the plan requires that, first of all, that there's very limited surface parking, 5% maximum surface parking, so basically no surface parking. And the plan goes to like great lengths to describe how we should minimize the appearance of parking, and also goes to great lengths to describe like how the topography can be used, um, to do that. So what we're just, what we're alluding to here is, is, are those sections in the plan, that parking, we know parking needs to be created and should be created, but that it should be created in a way that's, that's visually, uh, sorry, visually unobtrusive. Um, we were careful to not say underground parking there because of the fact that, you know, in, in this case, as I think we've probably talked about before, like, the parking can appear underground without, um, you know, the excavation and the, the other issues.
Yeah, I, I, I got that, and I read, I read the document that was sent out to us on Thursday.
Yeah.
Actually, read the documents that were sent out prior to that even, so this is new language, and so I guess, I want to make sure that it's understood when it's something that's hidden from view,
Yeah.
that that doesn't necessarily mandate one thing or another.
Yeah, and, and actually, it's not really, um, well, visually unobtrusive, I like that, that wording, I think that's a nice way of saying it.
I mean, we could just end the sentence at the word topography.
We could say topography as outlined in the plan, and same as we just added to the affordable housing line.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, I'm not trying to be obstructionist, the devil's in the details, but this is all new language that we haven't seen until just now, which, you know, it's problematic to get things at the last second.
The proposal was after the word topography, we'd strike the rest of that sentence and replace it with as outlined in the plan.
Don't we have these...
Get any traps for ourselves.
Yeah, but that, that's what I was just gonna say, if we have it in the plan already, why not take the wording that we have in the plan and reiterate it here? As opposed to creating new wording.
Yeah.
I think the purpose of the RFP is for them to refer to the plan, I think we should just keep referring them to the plan, you know?
Yeah, this is just really highlighting the key points.
Right, exactly, that's right, this is to call it out so that they're like, oh, okay, this is really important to them, because yes, it's in this 100-page document, but these are the things that we're calling out in five or six pages to say, hey, like, really take notice to these things.
Right, exactly, so, yeah, they, it can be a shorter sentence, it doesn't have to be that.
To tell you the truth, I don't think we need any sentences, if we're, if we're pulling out things of the benefits, you just need, you just need the bolded language, you know, the five points. You know, why, why create confusion? Like, for example, there's two areas here that talk about year-round programming. Does that mean the developer has to do the programming, or just they're capable of doing the programming? It's, we're creating new language that, that, that we haven't even thought about, and, um, I don't, I don't see any of this stuff as necessary.
No, but all this stuff is in the plan, that's what I'm saying, I don't understand why we're not just using that same verbiage.
Well, that's, that's what I'm agreeing with you.
So maybe just use the, use the bold, just leave the bold and take out all the language, is that what you're saying, uh, Jeff?
Yeah, you know, well, what we're trying to, if I understand it correctly, we're trying to highlight the things that are really important to us.
Right.
These are the things we want you to take notice of, because these are the five really key domains
Yes.
that we need you to do. And, you know, they, let them read the plan, let's not create new language here, these are the five things, go find them.
And, and just, you know, Chris, just, I, I just want to verify that these five items are detailed in the plan.
Yes.
Um, okay. So I don't want to delete, I don't want to delete copy if it's not 100% someplace else, because they are important.
So are we in agreement to just leave the bold letters, take out all the language?
I'm okay with that, and then at the bottom of the five bullet points, you can say as outlined in the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, all, all of these amenities are outlined further in the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, okay, Chris, is that okay? You good with that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's... Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, I'm not, it's going to be hard to just say parking. So like, probably I will, I think parking that is visually unobtrusive.
Unobtrusive, yes. So I think the same thing with Quincy, Quincy, Quimby Plaza, you know, a central plaza with, you know, capable of year-round programming, they can be a community space, right? Just, and don't go into the detail. We want the RFP responders to, I mean, this is going to be one of the things, the ways we choose, is the way that they're creative around solving these problems for us.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, I like to just leave the parking that is visually unobtrusive.
Yes.
You know, pedestrian connections to surrounding areas. I think that's more than enough.
Yeah, because the, if the other, especially if the other details are in the plan itself.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's just shorten these statements just so that they get to the crux of the matter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A quality statement, that's all we need.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, Jack Pigeon, I mean, if we're going to be voting on this tonight, do we need this modified paragraph or bullet points to be agreed or can we agree on it?
I think as long as you agree to the substance, and I agree with your discussion. You know, as I said earlier, it's just an invitation to submit a proposal. And the problem with putting too much detail in is you may have some inconsistencies then with the actual redevelopment plan. So, you know, I, I, I think you pretty much narrowed it down. So I think you are in a position to adopt it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, was there anything else you wanted to point out?
I mean, I might as well point out each of the changes, right? So just bear with me.
I think the paragraph above on, on page one was, there was a sentence and a half added.
Yeah, and actually, so before, I'm just looking at, before you go ahead, Chris.
Sure.
Parking right there is unobtrusive and away from pedestrians. Is there a pedestrian piece that's necessary?
No. Away from pedestrians.
Yeah, you mean so like cars aren't like interfering with people walking?
Yeah. It's more like a community space. I don't know. Again, but again, then again, I don't want introduced languages above, above and beyond the RFP or the actual plan itself.
I think parking then is visually unobtrusive, pretty.
Let them be creative around that, like you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get RFIs anyway, so you know, be more broad and, you know, we'll come back to proposals or questions.
Right. So I mean, if you want to go up to two paragraphs previously, beginning on subsequently on October 13th, 2020, this sentence beginning of the redevelopment plan, which is included as attachment A, that's a new sentence. I don't, this isn't like operative language here, but this is descriptive language. So if you want to, we're looking at it, we might as well look at it.
I don't see a whole lot of controversy around that, that.
That's fine, I think.
Okay.
It kind of sets the, sets the mood, you know, what we're looking for, why we're doing this.
So then Anthony, if you scroll down to implementation approach on page four.
Can we go back to the other one? I'm sorry. Do, do we want to include as an attachment? Like I said, it's kind of like a notice to bidders. And if they're interested, they can pick up the plan. Or us just sending out a, you know, a 50-page document.
I think it makes sense just in terms of being user-friendly and sorry if that was a question.
Okay, that's fine.
For like, when they click on this link, that it's just all one thing.
Yeah, it's going to be one continuous upload, pretty much. Download, whatever.
So just an added line, description of strategy, if any, for relocating existing tenants within the area. That language was in there. Then we added comma particularly the United States Post Office.
So I just have a question about this in general. Look, I, I appreciate we, we need to make sure that we take care of the existing tenants, whether it's the post office or any others. However, is that the responsibility of the developer? Where does that responsibility typically lie?
Depends, really. Depends on the municipality and how much how much weight is put on relocation. So you could obligate the developer to, you know, take effort, make efforts to relocate tenants. You could not, it's really, it's, it's, it's really sort of case by case type thing.
What does the, the plan say about relocation? Does it mention who should do it or?
It doesn't say much. All it says is that specifically around the post office, all it says is that in order to expedite implementation of the redevelopment plan, efforts may be undertaken by the redeveloper or the borough to identify alternative locations suitable to the post office.
I mean, so my, my opinion on such things, I'm hoping that it's in the economic best interest of the redeveloper to fully accommodate all of the tenants that are there. And that's a free market phenomenon that I don't believe the government, if they don't have to be involved in mucking free market items like this. So if, you know, if a tenant's there and they want to stay, and I hope that they do in that new location versus someplace else, you know, that's, that's a decision that they would make. So there's a sort of crossing two paths for me that I'm not sure need to cross.
Well, and it does, the plan gives them, gives the option of either or.
Yeah.
So I think we just.
The one tenant, though, that's different from all those other commercial tenants, Chad, is the post office. And so the question I have is what do we desire? Now, I personally think that having a post office in town is a benefit to the population here, and that's something I would want to keep. So I'm wondering why the word if any is there. What, what do we want? If, do we want to keep the post office, then we ought to say they ought to have a strategy for that. I agree with Councilman McQueen about, about the other commercial venues. They may choose to stay or not. But the post office is a different beast, and I, I, I'm not happy with this bullet point.
So, but, but go ahead, John.
No, I think that you can read it where it's, we do single the post office out by name as something that's like more equal than the others. And, you know, if I was the developer reading this, I could say, well, clearly the post office is a priority. Well, the other ones will see how the chips fall.
Right.
Let's just say that the post office wanted to move to a strip mall location down 202. What does that have to do with the existing redeveloper?
Well, that, that's fine. They can say that that's what's done, but what it reads now is description of strategy, if any. That means they could say we don't have a strategy. It's, it's fine where they're not obligated to have a strategy. Whereas if we mandate it, then they have to deal with the post office and the post office may say we want to go down to the strip mall down the road. And we can say, okay, that's our strategy. But right now, we're leaving them the option to do nothing.
Well, we don't, they don't, give us some.
It's not. We have to go, the plan is already approved. The plan says either one of us would do that. So we can't make the RFP stricter than the plan. Am I correct?
Yeah, well, we want to, I think what we wanted to avoid here in drafting that is we wanted to avoid a situation, it's a similar approach to why we wrote the plan the way we did. We wanted to avoid a situation where we put the post office in the driver's seat of this whole process.
Yeah.
I, I, I appreciate that, but with you, what I understand is that this is new language. This was, this was added from what we saw before. Is that correct?
Particularly the post office was.
Yeah, only after the comma. Because the, the post office wasn't mentioned at all.
We had it.
But everything else was there.
So I would, I would put a period within the area. I personally would not call out the post office.
I like calling out the post office.
Negotiations come in. I, I think the post office is, is, is a vital component of the.
This is where negotiations come in, though. It's, you know, it's written, sort of, we can read, two people can read it differently. I think that's kind of useful in a way because you get hopefully competing proposals and that was, we, you know, make the call ultimately. It's just getting people to come out of the woodwork with plans and ideas. I like the way it's written right now.
Yeah, I, I am too.
So the fundamental question in this is, so I believe, how much does the post office pay year-end rent?
Not much.
What's, what's the number? Can we say it publicly?
I don't. Jack, $1,500.
Okay.
$1,500 a month or a year?
A year. They pay $1,500 a year.
But I just want to clarify for the public, Chad, when was that, when was that established, Ralph? That was negotiated when? Oh, my goodness. Before I, before my 30 years, so. More than 30 years ago, that was, that's what was negotiated. And the contract extends through, through to 2024 or 2025, I think. So we're close.
So I mean, look, the post office is going to have a hard time finding rent that is a couple, let's just call it $125 a month. So I, I, I don't think that should be the burden of the redeveloper. I think the U.S. Postal Service has a problem they have to solve.
Well, what they're going to do, they're going to solve that by closing the post office here. And then that means we're going to go to other municipalities for our postal service. Is that what you really want?
Well, they have to, I mean, they have to relocate. So I don't know how we would do.
They don't have to. They could close, they could, you know, there's a lot of talk about closing post offices around the country. They could put this on the closure list.
No, but I mean, in, in the redevelopment plan, they need to vacate that building.
Oh, yeah, I got that. I get that. I understand. We talked about that any new building, there might be a part of a floor for the post office, et cetera. I just think, I guess my objection is the if any part of this sentence, I, I think that the post office is a vital component of our downtown.
You want to make it the burden of the redeveloper to, to figure this out?
Yes.
How are they going to, but nobody's going to offer them that kind of rent?
No.
Or subsidize it.
Or subsidize, yeah.
By the way, the lease was signed in 1968.
Wow.
I, I, I have an opposite opinion. Look, we're trying to maximize ratables in this borough. We're trying to redevelop our downtown in a place that, that works. If I have to drive to across the, you know, I don't know. This doesn't, like, this is something that, I think is a problem we have to solve. I'm not sure it's the redevelopment.
I don't think we should be solving it here. Jeff, well, I do agree with you. I do think it's an important feature of our town. I think the way it's written, a student reader will kind of maybe pick up on that, like, oh, this is probably, could be, separates us from our competitors. So, you know, and then negotiate around that.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the wording as it is.
Okay, moving on. Chris, what, anything else that's different?
Yeah, the last, the last thing I want to flag is Anthony, if you go to the next page under evaluation process, the if you see the, the quality of proposed design, contextual sensitive, sensitivity to the surrounding areas. The second sentence in that paragraph used to read, we just inverted it. It used to read the borough will look favorably upon projects that provide the public details, sorry, public benefits detailed in the plan while limiting building height to three stories. And it now says the borough will look favorably upon projects that limit building height to three stories while providing the public improvements required in the plan. I just think the old wording was suggested that that it was kind of an either or, that perhaps the public benefits weren't weren't the priority. So I think this is, this is more clear, but not a huge change.
What was the change? It was a change for clarity, not for substance.
A change for clarity, not for substance, yes.
Yeah, you just flipped the two, and that was actually Tom's suggestion.
What was the previous sentence?
It was the other ground.
Sentence said the borough will look favorably upon projects that provide the public detail, public benefits detailed in this plan while limiting building height to three stories.
Okay, so it's the same content.
Yeah.
And those are, those are the changes that we made since Friday.
Great. I had four comments when I read this two weeks ago after the council meeting, and all of them have been addressed now. So I like it. Thank you.
Good. Okay, so are we good with that, with the changes as they are? Because then I think we've gone through everybody's questions on all these resolutions. So I think we can actually move them all.
Do we need to pull out the Quimby one because we have to do it as amended or no? I don't know, Jack?
You do not because it's actually been revised prior to acting on it. It's not technically an amendment.
Okay, but there's some, there's some changes, though, that Chris still needs to make then on the, on those bullet points, all the other.
That's correct.
Right, me too, though.
Then maybe we should pull it out and just say you're adopting it substantial in the form discussed. And Chris Colley is to, you know, finalize the language in accordance with the resolutions.
Just one question before we proceed, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I, I believe the RFP due date is about 30 days from today. Is that correct?
No.
I think it was six weeks.
Is it six weeks?
I can just read it if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
That we have an issuance of December 21st, which is a week from today. Deadline to submit questions, January, and honestly, we expect nobody's really going to do anything for a week or two, right?
Yeah.
Holidays. Deadline for questions is January 26th.
Never mind. Yeah. Yeah, I saw the January 26th date and I thought it was a deadline for submission.
Okay.
And that was my assessment. If we, if no one started until the first week of January, they're not going to get this done in two weeks.
Yeah. And then what is the submission date, Chris?
February 18th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's reasonable. Okay, good.
Okay, so we will pull that one out. Would someone like to move resolutions 2285 to 2305, except for 2304?
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
Okay, so now would someone like to move 2304? And Jack, what's the wording as?
Yeah, with, with the changes discussed by the council, the substantive changes and directing Chris Colley to make those changes.
All right, would someone like to move that?
I'm moving it. I don't have to repeat it all.
Yeah, just say I move. Yeah, Christine, I think you got that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, um, we are.
Was flipping through the pages here. I, I don't know. I just want to make sure we, we thank people for donations. I see two donations that are the environmental commission garden. And there was also a donation made to the police department. I want to just make sure we thank people for those donations.
Yes, good, good point. Thank you. Yeah, there was a, a very generous donation to the police from the Paragono Foundation. And also I think from was to the, the garden, which I didn't realize we could, we have a separate account set up for that, right? So we can make contributions to that garden on Alcott, not, yeah, it's Alcott Ave.
Yes.
Harry Hazelton, I believe, made a donation. So thank you, Harry. Thank you, Tom, for pointing that out.
Thank you.
A long list, we kind of skipped through it.
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor, I, sorry, Dr. Hammond, I was actually going to go back to Quimby for a second. While we still had Chris on the line, but did you?
No, I was going to go back to that as well. So you go ahead.
Okay, I actually just wanted to ask about kind of from the RFP's perspective, and I'm, I'm assuming that the responders will respond with this just because it's kind of inherent in it. But if they're, if they're asking for creative redevelopment activities or payments or, you know, things to get the economy moving, will they, is that in the RFP written so that they will provide that information of what they're going to ask kind of the borough?
Like subsidy?
Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming they're going to get creative, so.
Yeah, I'll tell you what it says in there. We ask them for preliminary financial analysis, including an estimated development budget, okay? And any anticipated public subsidy or other assistance to be requested. Respondents are encouraged to provide whatever financial information necessary to substantiate the projected budget.
Okay, good, yeah. Generic enough.
Do we need to have a discussion about?
That's why I didn't want to hold up the vote, but thank you.
Do we need to have a discussion about public support or benefit prior to us reviewing these RFPs?
I think that'll go through probably Joe DiMarco. He's pretty much the expert on how all those different programs work and the subsidies and the pilot programs and all that. So.
Yeah. I guess if and what we're willing to consider, I think it's, it's worth for us to understand those things before we even get into those discussions.
Yeah, that becomes part of the whole negotiation process.
Yep.
Would, would Joe come to counsel and help us understand what the different ones mean? And then, okay, good.
Yeah. So maybe we can put that on the, on the agenda for maybe in January, for him to come and explain what options are.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, I'll talk to him. Actually, I'd asked him to be here tonight, but I don't see him. So, yeah, we can reach out to him. Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, well, I just want to understand going forward on, if these are due, the submissions are due February 18th, what's the process after that? Yeah, well, I just want to understand going forward on, if these are due, the submissions are due February eighteen, what's the process after that?
Yeah, um, so I haven't looked at your twenty-twenty-one council meeting schedule yet, but we're gonna get the RFPs in, right? We're gonna evaluate them and, for completeness, first of all, right? Um, and, uh, I would expect that the council would probably want a briefing, at least in terms of who submitted and what they submitted, right? Uh, but, but, you know, the borough's professionals or whatever, if you're gonna set up a subcommittee or whatever, is gonna have to vet those, like, in, uh, some level of detail. And, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if, have to request supplemental information, um, from respondents to like, to try and get a full picture. Um, so again, my expectation would be get them in February, probably give you an update at maybe your first meeting in March, like, this is what we got. Um, and then have probably interviews with the respondents and request supplemental information, um, if needed.
So when you say the, the borough professionals, you're talking about the administrator, the engineer, head of public, well, who are you talking about?
Oh, um, well.
Marco, yeah, the attorney.
Yeah, I'm sure Joe will be involved, like, we hope we're involved.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, uh.
But who, who from the borough?
That's up to you, frankly.
Yeah, um, we have our, you know, uh, our land use committee, which is Tom and John and myself. Um, we also have the downtown development, uh, the redevelopment committee, who I'm sure will wanna weigh in. Um, so it'll probably go through them at some point, and then, uh, the whole council will probably hear it.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to voice, I, I would hope that the three of us on the council who are not part of those groups get to, get, uh, to be actively involved. We really weren't in this process until the very end. I mean, we get to review things once they're, you know, almost fully baked. Uh, I hope now, when we get to the real heavy lifting, which is the evaluation of the, of the actual plans, that we're engaged, uh, earlier.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it would be helpful, actually, if we found some way to, uh, engage with all members of the, of the council. You know, we kind of tried to do that a little bit with our finance committee, where we're, we're trying to have more in-depth discussions and ability to share information with the council members who aren't on the finance committee. So I, I do think that that would be a good idea. I think, you know, that this is a pretty big, uh, topic for us. It's a major improvement, I think, for our town, and I think having everybody involved, you know, would be helpful. The, the elected members of the, of the council, I mean.
I, I agree, Tom, and Jeff, too. Thanks for mentioning it. And I think, you know, I mean, we talked to the, the last time about, you know, getting a real, like, project manager, somebody that was really gonna facilitate this whole thing, and I think we need to talk about what we do there as well.
Yeah, it's a good point as well.
Because I want somebody there that's facilitating and driving this, right? Because, I mean, us on council, we don't have the time for it. We're volunteering enough, but.
You're a project manager? Come on.
Yeah. I can do it if you want to pay me my normal salary for work. But, yeah, no, I think, uh, we need, we need somebody that's gonna focus on, on this, and I think it's really, really important. Like Councilman O'Day said, it's, it's one of the biggest things that we're gonna do for this borough over the next many, many years. So I want to make sure that we, we do this right.
Agreed.
Okay, good. Well, we'll figure out a way to, to do that, um, because if we have everybody together, it would be a public session.
Sure, we have to figure out how we manage it, you know?
Small groups to, uh, work through it. Yeah, but I think the more we can get everybody involved, the better. Okay, we are now up to the proposed detour on Route two oh two bridge over the north branch of the Raritan River.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Chris, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Chris.
Take care. Happy holidays.
Um, we had the, uh, the presentation that I guess Doug shared with us. Uh, Chad, you seem to have some comment on this?
Uh, more a lack of understanding than comment. So, I mean, why, where's it going? There's, is Doug here? Can somebody give some background on why we're doing, why we're doing this?
This is a county, this is county work.
Yeah, it's not even, it's not in Bernardsville, it's in Bedminster, Far Hills.
Yeah, it's Far Hills, and it's pretty big chunk. It's, it's a big bridge, so it's involving a lot of towns and a lot of, uh, road, you know, a lot of area that is hard to detour.
It's gonna affect us, um, considerably, and I, I'm wondering, I find this to be unacceptable, that it takes two and a half years to do this.
Yeah.
And closing that, that part of the road for six months, I mean, there is no way around that. No good.
Two eighty-seven to get around it.
Yeah, or, or you go up into Mendham, or, uh, uh, around, you know, mountain to get around.
Or, or into the hills and back up Douglas Ave through Far Hills.
It's a very crazy detour, so I don't know what they want from us, um, in terms of what they're asking us. Do we have to approve the detour, or, uh, I'm not sure what it is that we need to do with this.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, Ralph, do you have any idea?
I think at this point in time, it's, it's informational that this is their, you know, this is their plan at the moment, and I'll speak to Doug tomorrow and John during the course of this and see if, you know, if there's any, anything else we can provide for them, or any chance to discuss or change anything that they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to request they shorten the time.
That council, council member McCready, that's exactly, you know, we, we should ask the question, why does it take so long? I mean, if you're gonna have such a major detour for a short time, would make sense. But a major detour in then a long time, it starts to become sort of like, how did you get to this plan? It's, can't we do any better?
You know, and I'm just, I'm looking at the presentation here, and it says, "Items requiring stakeholder input." And they're only asking for a resolution of support from Bedminster and Far Hills. They're not even asking us to approve anything.
Even though we're listed as a stakeholder, that's interesting.
Yeah, but they only listed Bedminster and Far Hills to have to do a resolution.
And P PAC wasn't even listed as a stakeholder, and that's gonna be one of the biggest, uh, detour areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be going through there, and some of Bernardsville, uh, if they use, um, I think they were gonna try white knacking around, or.
Yeah, look, yeah, I'm looking at the map now, white knacking around.
Yeah.
Can we, can we write a letter anyway, just asking some of the obvious questions, why so long? I mean, even, even though they're not necessarily asking for us to do a resolution or anything, we can still write a letter of comment, I would think.
They want our input by, by December, no later than December twenty-first. It says that at the bottom of, of the email, that the DOT's requested input from governing bodies on the proposed detour to be submitted to the DOT no later than December twenty-first. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I mean, and although it is a two and a half year project, or whatever it is, from twenty-four to twenty-six, I said, I think they said summer to winter. But, I mean, I, I'm more concerned about the road closure. I don't really care about how long it takes them to do the work, as long as the road isn't closed for six months, like, that's a long time.
And I know when they did the one down by, um,
Right here.
They were able to, you know, first they proposed closing, and people protested enough that they worked out a way to keep one lane open. They were only totally closed for a short period, and then they worked on a one-lane solution, and.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think if they can work out a way to at least get one, like, keep one lane open during some of the construction, it would be a relief.
Well, I believe they are saying they're keeping one, one lane open for some of the construction, aren't they?
No, I didn't see that.
It was on, it was gonna be fully closed for six months.
And the other two years, there, the other two years, there was also gonna be some reduction, I thought. I don't know.
And there's, there's two stages, so there's a different detour for different stages or something. It was not, yeah. Um, can you, um, Ralph, can you ask Doug to give us kind of a, you know, a, a summary of what he thinks, how it impacts us, and, you know, and then maybe we can come up with a, or have him write a response based on what you're hearing tonight?
Yeah, Doug wrote a little email, but, you know, well, maybe it was a long email. But, um, it, it really was more asking us to kind of verify, I guess, whatever he was summarizing, but.
Sure.
Yeah, do you have a public works meeting coming up anytime soon?
No, I think, uh, maybe a couple of weeks, because I think we just had it last week or two weeks ago.
Okay, I was gonna say, maybe you could.
Well, if we have to get our comments in by seven days from now, you know, we're.
Yeah.
We're, we're stuck. Now, we, maybe we could submit comments after that date, just, you know, just to be on record. But, uh, I, I think this is a unacceptable burden, both in terms of the time it baked the bridge, and also the short time for us to make the comments.
Sorry, we do have a public works meeting tomorrow.
Ah, there you go. All right.
Not up on my calendar this weekend. Sorry about that.
Charge your committee with coming up with, uh, the suggestions of what we should put in our letter.
Go.
I think you know what we're all thinking, so, well, we'll trust you guys to get the message out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what was next?
Field treatments. Field treatments, right?
Yeah, the, the field treatments, and I think John is giving the option of doing the same thing as last year, so we need to do a resolution.
You know, before we get to the resolution, um, so as everyone's aware, there's been work going on down at Kiwanis. And so I'm hearing this third hand, so if, if there's something in, not a hundred percent accurate, but this is the, the general gist that I got. Uh, there was a lot of care to put down boards for every equipment when that construction was going on, and to make sure that things were maintained, especially the outfields and the spaces by the, in between the fields. Uh, it was my understanding that after the rain, uh, the other day, True Green showed up, I believe, to overseed and dumped dirt all over the fields, and absolutely tore the living you-know-what out of the areas that we had been spending a lot of time trying to maintain. Uh, Ralph, if you can pass along to True Green and to Public Works that it's really a shame i- if this is what happened, that they, they tore up the outfields to the point where they have to be probably regraded and reseeded.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, but, okay.
If you can get somebody over there, um, it's quite unfortunate the way that it looks right now, especially with the amount that the, of time and effort that the baseball organization put into getting those fields where they needed to be.
So if they did that, shouldn't they be responsible to restore it to where it was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just bring, uh, from, if, if what I hear is, is, is a true statement, and, and I'm admittedly saying this is third, third-hand information, um, it's not good enough.
Agreed.
Okay, do you want to, uh, leave this resolution till, um, the next meeting, then?
I'm okay pushing the resolution along, but it's sort of, you know, and considering a new, uh, this contractor or new one, um, obviously, performance of the, of the old contract is an important piece, so.
Uh, yeah, and the resolution is just specifying the treatments. It's not saying who's doing them, so, yeah, we're okay with that.
Okay with the resolution, just I'm not sure True Green's gonna get my vote again, if they actually did this.
Okay, um, so this would be, what, resolution, what number are we up to, Anthony?
We're up to number three oh six.
Three oh six, um, so would someone like to move resolution to twenty-three oh six, designating field treatments in twenty-twenty-one?
Are, are we voting, or are we still having a discussion about it?
Oh, we, uh, you want to talk about it? Go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious, why was the Rose Bowl, um, in, in the field of the Rose Bowl treated differently than the other fields?
I think because of the, is it because of the area around it, that, that walking, that gravel area?
If I read it correctly, they're talking, they were talking about the area, the baseball area itself, so, you know, why was that? That was synthetic, if I remember. I'm not looking at it right now, but when I read it, I, it caught my eye, that that was synthetic, and the other fields were organic. And I'm wondering why would the playing surface of the Rose Bowl not be organic?
Um, once the Rose Bowl, Clermont, the two fields at Kiwanis and Borough Hall have synthetic. All of them have.
In the twenty-twenty-one resolution, you're saying?
Yes, and the organic is the Polo grounds and the soccer fields.
Can we, can we pull that up, Anthony? Uh, uh, maybe I'm remembering it wrong.
Yeah, yeah, I think you are, yeah, I think you are, I'm looking at it right here, but yeah, Anthony, if you pulled up.
I will, I will do that right now, yep.
Yeah, it says, "The inside fence baseball playing area is Rose Bowl, Kiwanis, two, uh, Clermont, two at Kiwanis, Borough Hall, and then they also get a grub treatment."
Right, okay, I see that now. What, what, I thought, though, that we wanted the, the actual playing area where the kids were gonna be, to be organic. Am I wrong about that?
Um, no, you're, uh, from my perspective, you're wrong about that. The, the playing areas, um, especially the baseball playing areas are, are really important.
I got that, but I'm trying to remember the, the conversations we had a year ago about this.
This is the same as, as the one we approved last year, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wanted to ask how the, how the treatment was going, like, you know, how, how does, I mean, I asked John, so it's kind of a rhetorical question, but.
Yeah, and he responded.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and he said that they're, that they're doing much better. Um, there were still some issues. I want to just find his email.
Clover, he said there was a lot of clover, I think, remember that.
Don't believe so, but I'll just make sure.
So why does, why are we having the soccer fields be organic, but the baseball field's not?
The soccer fields are just, you know, get big grass area, right?
Also, because those kids, the school kids use them, the elementary schoolers sometimes, maybe? I forget.
Maybe because, and they get used a lot more?
Well, they, they certainly, the Clermont field is used for T-ballers. That's, that's us little grade school kids.
Yeah, but it's not used nearly as much as the soccer fields.
Well, maybe it's more grass on the soccer fields.
It is.
I thought it went to a full synthetic treatment, though. We, we had a whole big, long discussion about.
No, we came up with the compromise.
Yeah, and so here, here's John's response, just for everybody's, um, edification. So I asked him how the treatments worked out, um, given all the conversation that was around this. He said, "They're looking pretty good this year, probably due to frequent rains, some signs of clover, yes, good memory, Mary Jean, um, on Polo and the common areas at Kiwanis." And it says, "But that's, we're using organic there and no weed control." Um, it's, we don't have that issue at Borough Hall with synthetic plus the weed control. Um, and he said, "Doing the grub treatment at Polo and Evan Cow, Evan Cow, um, we had no issues, so that was good that we did that." So it seems like we do have more clover on the areas where we're using organic and not, uh, without weed control.
But it, but it's green.
But it's green.
I think, um, if you couldn't think back to the discussion, it was mainly what we went back and forth about was the fact that any good treatment should consider what the condition the field is in and use that to make your decision as to what you should treat. So it's not like a blanket, "We're gonna treat grubs when there's no grubs," essentially. And that was why we decided, after talking to True Green and, you know, getting a very good sense of how they do that, we felt comfortable using them to continue, because they've been using that philosophy. Is it an organic philosophy? Not necessarily, but essentially, what you don't want is to over-treat fields when you don't need it. Number one, that's expensive, and number two, it's not necessary. So the reason why, um, the Polo and Evan Cow, to answer Dr. Jeff's question, is because it didn't need the synthetic. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then anytime it's the, like, if you notice the other areas listed, uh, under organic, the library, the pool, the playground, you cannot use synthetic in those areas by law, so those are always gonna be that way. Um, the outfield of the ball fields, uh, the Little League expressed that they definitely want that to always be synthetic. So what we came up with was a, uh, plan of action, which was to notify all of the key players within a certain number of days, and you, some of you have noticed those emails, maybe that say, you know, "In the next three days, True Green is coming to do X, Y, Z treatments on these fields." And it's very specific, because the parents' concerns were that, "Well, I'm not sending my kids to Little League practice if they just spray True Green all over the place." So this is, this is a compromise, essentially, and this is what we had decided on last year. Am I a hundred percent in favor of, in favor of this? No, because I don't think we should be using any synthetic, but I'm okay with, you know, something in order to take care of the fields.
Okay, well, if you're okay with it, then I'll follow your lead, but I know that this was, uh, something you were passionate about. I just was curious about the continued use of synthetics, particularly in some areas that weren't quite as, uh, prone to being beat up, uh, like the, like the Little League fields, uh, and I'm thinking specifically at Clermont.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff, I can be pretty, pretty clear on this issue. Under no circumstance am I willing to go forward with, we, we tried anything other than. anything other than making sure these fields, the outfield of the baseball fields are maintained properly. So.
Right, so the synthetic.
They have proper, we can balance baseball versus health, and we could, that's something we could discuss going forward in years ahead.
Right, so the synthetic treatments are on those fields listed, but again, it's not necessarily gonna be happening if, you know, if we don't see the grub problem as maybe we did this year. So this is the ability to use synthetic if needed.
Right.
And that's always the way it has been, and the other thing about the the, this week, TruGreen did a top dress, I guess they just put top soil over the grass, so that's probably what you saw.
They had, that was what created the issue, because they just drove their trucks through wet grass and tore them to pieces.
Okay. So as, this is what, 2306? Are we okay with approving it as it is? Or do we want to add in there something about it when it's needed, kind of thing?
Uh, I'm okay with the way it is.
Fine.
All right, so would someone like to move it?
I mean, it's only limited to this one year, so that's fine.
Right.
What was the number, Mary Jane? It was 2836, you said?
306.
306.
Uh, I'll move resolution 2306, designating field treatments in 2021.
Second, all right, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amera?
No.
Okay. Mayor's update is next, December 4th. I attended a liquor license reform town hall, which downtown New Jersey has an initiative to, with some of the Assembly and Senate members to try and redo the antiquated liquor laws, the big hurdle in reforming them is, you know, not doing harm to the existing license holders. So they're trying to work out a way that, because for some people, you know, in in New Jersey, they can go anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 for a liquor license, and for some restaurant owners, people holding these licenses, that's their retirement plan. You know, they're counting on that money, so the problem is trying to make it fair for the people who already have them, but make it less burdensome for people who want to get a license. And actually, they pointed out in Brooklyn, you can get a liquor license for $4,000 for two years. So, yeah, New Jersey's laws, you really need some updating, so that's, you'll probably be hearing more about that. On the 8th, I attended the New Jersey League of Municipalities Seminar Challenges for Your 2021 Budget, which I'll pass the PowerPoint on to the Finance Committee, but it was encouraging to see that a lot of their recommendations we are already using and have in place, so, you know, and having those reserves that we have, the absences and other things that we already have in place, so we're doing the right stuff. Uh, the 9th, I think, and Dr. Hammond was also there, the Somerset County Governing Officials Association had their monthly meeting. I have been elected to the Executive Board of the Association as the Secretary. Fortunately, it doesn't involve a lot of work, so.
I would just point out, I, you know, it's open to all of us who are on the council, and I find the meetings, I mean, it's another meeting, it's another evening, but I find them to be pretty worthwhile, and I would encourage people to to come to them, the speakers are generally pretty good.
Yeah, and they're, you know, it's once a month, and it's it's nonpartisan, you know, it doesn't matter what party you are, or, you know, as long as you're an elected official, and they usually do get good speakers, interesting speakers, and you get to meet other, now they're all virtual, but when they were live, it was an opportunity to talk to people from other towns and, you know, hear about their experiences, so, yeah. I know Anthony usually sends the notices out, so it's worth popping in. The 10th was the Somerset County Planning Partners Forum, that the county does just an update on what's going on in the county, how their their preservation and the walking, and the, they're now doing that road safety study, but they didn't pick any roads in Burnsville, so we're not in that study. But they're hoping to each year add different roads that they'll do a safety study on, so hopefully we'll get in that mix. We did the, I attended the menorah lighting that evening, thank you, Dr. Hammond and Nancy Negri and the Diversity Council for making that happen, and Brenda Kernan for allowing it to go on her property, I think it's a great location. It was a, the rabbi is just, he was just incredible, he did a great job, and, you know, it was it was a really nice ceremony.
Yeah, I just want to, since you mentioned everybody's name, that was Rabbi Shemtah from the Chabad in Baskin Ridge up in, it actually is in Millington, they've been very helpful.
And I'd like to just second, you know, the mayor's sentiment, Jeff, I know we had a discussion at council, the challenging situation finding the right spot, I think you found the perfect spot.
Yeah.
Um, it's highly prominent, it's right, it's a really nice addition, so, well done.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, on this past Saturday, we had the pop-up craft market, it was small, but I think well-received. Uh, what was nice to see was that some of the young girls had their little businesses set up, the Gloss Factory or whatever they are, and Jessica from Fairy Tale, her daughter does custom cups, so it was a really nice addition to the farmer's market. And we had the first mural painting session in the train station, which was really fun to see how it happens, you know, and to see that design in in pieces and how big it's actually gonna be. We had probably, I'd say, 50 people come in and paint from all ages, adults, children, so it was really, really just a fun day to see people coming in.
We have photos for the website, Mayor?
Uh, yes, and Charlie showed up from the paper, so, yeah, I have a bunch of pictures, and Dr. Hammond was there, and John Donahue stopped in and saw the whole process, it's pretty impressive.
Do we have a new date for the next time we're gonna do this?
Uh, no, we're thinking about the week between Christmas and New Year's for the school kids, since everybody's home and off, they're off school anyway, but thought it might be a good week to maybe have moms and kids come in and do some painting, so we're gonna talk to the artist, I think Wednesday night, and see if we can come up with dates, and then try and publish them so people can sign up. We have to limit it to 10 people in there at a time with masks, so, and the artist had two assistants, so it was actually seven people at a time that could go in.
Mayor, is there a signup sheet? Because I did look for the signup sheet, I saw lots of information that was easily available, but I didn't see a, like, a signup sheet for picking a time slot or whatever, you just show up to do it.
Um, for Sat, this past Saturday, there wasn't a signup, it was just, you know, kind of people stopped and asked, and and they rotated out, you know, the little kids couldn't paint more than 10 minutes, and they were tired, you know, but, and then some people, we had to kind of say, okay, you know, make room for someone else, but.
All right, so if that's the approach we'll do again, then we can advertise that, because I was looking for a signup sheet, I didn't find it, but if we're not gonna have a signup sheet, just come and wait your turn, that's, that's fine, too.
Well, I think probably if we do, if we have more dates, we'll try and do blocks of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that, because there were other things to do there on Saturday. So really, you know, if people wanted to paint, they'd say, well, I'll go look at the farmer's market, I'll come back, which if it's just painting, you can't really have them just standing outside, so we will probably do time slots.
But once we get into January, then there'll be the farmer's market outside, so.
Oh, right, that'll still be there on Saturdays, yeah.
Yeah, I I have to say, I think, I thought it was very well organized, and I think the, when you look at the panels, you know, in the flesh, so to speak, it, they're even better than what, you know, we saw at the reveal when they were projected against the wall as a photo, I I was pretty impressed, I didn't paint because I didn't want to take anybody else's spot, and because I have a hard time staying between the lines anyhow, but I think everybody was having a great time, you know, ought to come on down and sign up.
Thank you for self-censoring yourself, Jeff.
You know, and Sherwin-Williams donated all the paint, which is just wonderful, and right now, what they're, you know, we're looking for more sponsors because we still have to pay the artists yet, so you'll be, you'll see more for sponsorships, and I think they were trying to do some other fundraising.
Did the t-shirt sales go towards the the painting project, or was that separate?
I think that was just for downtown Burnsville.
So that'd be a cool t-shirt, that mural on a shirt, I think.
Yeah, the only, which I heard, it might be too long, unless you're very wide.
Have to gain some weight over the winter, after Christmas, I'll probably can put on some weight.
It could say Bernard's and then Ville on your back.
That's what I was just gonna say, too, Tom, you gotta flip it over.
Yeah, we sort of make a great bumper sticker, too, though, you know, that that little, that long strip. So, and Karen gave us permission to use, like, you know, we could make posters or cards or something that people could buy or prints, you know, so we'll see if there's other avenues for fundraising.
Ornaments are usually good fundraisers.
What?
Ornaments.
Ornaments, yeah, we're a little late for that, but, I know. Um, and then that night was the tree lighting at 4 o'clock, which really went exceedingly well, Donahue was so foggy and damp. Um, but they filmed the whole thing, I think they were gonna make it available either on the Chamber website, it really, the talent they had was phenomenal, they had singers there that were young kids, families, and they were so good, it's worth watching if you get a chance to see it.
Yeah, I think they said Pepe, I saw somebody maybe said Pepe Gladstone filmed it, and they were gonna.
Yeah, they, yeah, they had a whole big setup there, I mean, it was very professional, so hopefully it, they livestreamed it and then they taped it, so you should be able to see it at another date, so that worked out without having a crowd in the center of town, so that was good. Um, and I actually went the Saturday before grand opening for, we actually have a new business in town, where Galaxy Nails was, is now Discovery Antiques and Jewelry, and it's really a really cool store, it's worth stopping in, really nice people and lots of jewelry. So, yeah, it's nice to see a new business opening up in the middle of the pandemic. So that's my report. Um, I think the Correspondence will do an executive because it relates to property. Any unfinished business? Do we have anything still?
I have something to bring up, the RFP for the train station, when I was there, I kept, what a great space that is, is that ready to go? I mean, it's, or can we get it?
It is out.
Oh, it is? Is it on our website? I didn't see last week, so is it up now?
It just went up, we were waiting for a schedule from John and Doug, a realistic schedule.
Okay.
Beyond my expertise. But it is, it is out.
Do you know when it's due?
Um, like, two months, they they thought people would need a while, I can tell you, give me one second.
So it's not yet on the website, though?
It is on the website.
It is.
Does it get published, like, is there a trade publication or RFP guide that people go to versus stumbling, you know, word of mouth or stumbling across on our website?
Actually, Anthony had been creating a list ever since we mentioned that it was gonna be up, we have gotten, how many, a number of requests for it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and there's five notices on the website with the auction and the other RFPs. This one's due February 26th at 2:00 P.M.
Okay, there was, you were maintaining a list because people, there were a lot of people.
A list of people, yes.
Yeah.
I have a list of RFPs, yes, I have a list of people.
What is that notice?
Those are people who are local and that know about it, to Councilman Donahue's point, which I think is a good one, how do we publish, people aren't gonna come to our website and come, go trolling looking for RFPs? How do we, how do we get the word out that we have this really desirable opportunity?
It'll be in the, it'll be in the Burnsville News this Thursday, a notice, but I mean.
Yeah, but if, unless you, I mean, to to Dr. Hammond's point, how do we get the word out?
If we're specifically asking for a restaurant, I'm sure there's a restaurant association for the state.
Yeah.
Uh, posted to.
Yeah, I think we just, you know, we may very well find that one of the local people who are interested, you know, have the best proposal, but I want to get as many as we can possibly get that are interested.
Yeah.
Ralph, could you look into that and see if there's a, if there's a restaurant association for advertising?
Yeah, I know I've seen it mentioned, particularly because they've been lobbying for opening and whatever, so.
I mean, I know a couple people in the industry I can ask, too, Ralph, if if you need.
Sure, we can do that.
Yep. Um, and the other thing, you know, the, we're hoping to keep doing the painting in the train station until we're ready for a new tenant, and then prop, then we'll be moving to the parish house at St. Berners for painting. They have agreed to let us use their parish house. So for now, we'll, we'll still stay in the train station until there's a tenant. Just makes it easier. Okay, what else did we have? Let's see, new, new business, do we have?
Mayor, I I had one for unfinished business, and shoot me, any word from the Board of Ed?
Um, yeah.
Has Mrs. DeMarco been responding?
I did get an answer, and I know John was trying, did you get ahold of Jenny for?
I've reached out a couple of times, I was gonna try to brainstorm that with some of you folks, and Jeff, you know, I texted Jeff because we're working on this together, and I called him again today, left a message, and kind of, just looking for some information I can pass on to Somerville, so give them what they need to do to get permission and insurances and all that kind of stuff. But so far, not, no luck.
Yeah, I think I did get a response from the business administrator, who was, who was, you know, kind of like, you know, it's been crazy, we've been so busy, you know, with all this opening and closing and the COVID things, and I saw Bob Baker on Saturday and mentioned to him, you know, that I'd like at least, or, you know, if we could get our finance committees together, and he was like, oh, we're so busy, we're so busy, you know, and so I don't know, it's, it's been frustrating, but I will keep at it.
Okay, thank you.
And I know.
Maybe the public can join us in asking for this.
They are overwhelmed with, you know, what they're dealing with, there are no question, the homeschooling and the virtual and all the, you know, it's, it's been a little more than they anticipated, I'm sure, so maybe January, we'll get it working.
Okay. Um, thank you for trying. We have to be relentless, I guess.
I know, you know, polite, you know, I'm trying to be polite. We're gonna be civil. Any other new business, something we haven't talked about, anybody wants to? No, we're good?
Um, I had something, and I had actually emailed Jack first, and I haven't had a chance to read his response, and he was kind enough to respond to me, like, super quickly. But I was asking about the, I I think that there used to be, or we have an ordinance about attendance at the committee meetings, and for lack of attendance at committee meetings and, and, you know, trying to remove people, or if they don't meet the attendance, or if we even just inform them of how they officially resign from a position? Because I'm thinking maybe some people just don't know, and so they just stop showing up and think that everything's okay, but they don't realize that they're now preventing others from joining because they're still on the the list of people, and they're not, and then they're just not showing up, so I didn't know if there was an ordinance for it, but.
I don't know if it's an ordinance, or is it in our, it, Jack's saying, well, wait, you're on mute, Jack.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, there's a state law, but that only applies to statutory boards and commissions. We talked about setting different rules for advisory committees, but we really haven't ever, ever done that, and the state law is fairly liberal, it takes like either four, eight consecutive meetings, or or four consecutive meetings over four months, I sent it to Gina.
Yeah, I I have it, I can.
I could call it up, give me one second.
I have it up, Jack. But it does, it does say, yeah, eight, for a period of eight consecutive weeks, so I don't know, or four consecutive regular meetings.
And it's only if they're not excused, and part of the problem is the chairs of many of these boards and commissions give consent to people missing meetings, so it's hard to meet the standards that was in the statute.
Uh, I would propose, then, I, I, I would propose then that one of our first items of business next year, as we go back, as we go into the reorganization, is that we try to set, you know, for these, for ad hoc committees.
Ad hoc, just.
No, the, our standard committees. I mean, Health is one that I'm concerned about.
Some framework around them, specifically in regards to what the role and mission is, because I don't think all of them have mission, mission documents as, as regards to their role, and also discuss attendance in, in number of folks in these committees.
Well, I think, I think they do have a mission statement, or they do have an intent, a charge, if you will.
Yes.
But I do, I do, they all have that, but I do.
I don't believe they all do, Jeff.
The ones I'm familiar with, they do.
I think all of those who are created by ordinance have a charge.
Yeah.
I, I, but I do agree that we, we ought to have some sort of requirements because we want to take it seriously. We want the people on it to take it seriously.
Can we ask the chairpeople, at least for this year, because we're, now we're coming up with reappointments to review their membership? If somebody hasn't been showing, you know, let's put it on the chairman to find out if they have resigned, and if so, that we need a letter from them, or just an email, anything, saying that they've resigned. And then whoever is up for reappointment may be asking them if they're, if they want to be reappointed. Some people don't even know that they're up.
I can ask the chairs for that, yes.
Yeah.
One thing we, one thing we talked about but didn't implement back in 2018 was making all advisory committee terms one year.
Yeah.
So that, you know, membership could be revisited at each reorganization meeting.
Wow.
I don't think that's, you know, like, we're, we're entering a new chapter here. Globally, we've been talking about this a lot in personnel and other places. A new chapter. I don't think, at least maybe in the short term, I don't think that's a terrible idea.
I, I think we should, yes, I think we ought to consider that, and I think we ought to consider, you know, that actually eliminates the issue of term, term limits, if you make it just yearly reappointments, and we, my understanding is, we have some people in the Skills Bank who want to be on committees, and there's no opportunity for them. Which actually lets me ask, we had four resumes, I believe, that we reviewed in our packet. Did all these people get placed? Because they all looked like good candidates.
Uh, well, we're going to do that during reorg, because it's kind of the end of the year, it's.
Oh, good, during reorg, okay.
Yeah. I know there's two openings on environmental, and I, I think one of those was interested in environment, two of them were interested in environmental. Johanna, who's, I think she's here, had one person that she was recommending, and then someone else had also asked. And I'm not sure what the other two, I know I have a number I've been saving for Board of Adjustment, but I don't know, you know, no one has resigned or not gotten reappointed there, so there are.
I think there's a couple for rec, too, right, Mayor?
We can't change the terms for Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, that's statutory.
I know.
But we can't for rec because that's an ordinance-created advisory committee. And the other thing we implemented, but we never carried out in 2018, was the council appoints the chair of each committee every year. And, and that really hasn't happened, but that was an attempt to try to, you know, gain some control over the committees.
And that's, we're supposed to do that?
Yeah, that, that's in the ordinance, it was adopted.
So that the council's supposed to appoint the chairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we probably should, if you would, those of you who are representatives on different committees, you know, Anthony sent, did you send everybody the appointment list?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so if you would look at your committee, whichever one you're liaisoned to, and see where people are, you know, their terms are coming up, and, you know, maybe advise us on what we should be doing with those positions.
Right.
Because, you know, we don't have a lot of time now for the end of the year. The January 4th is when we reappoint or put new people on, so we kind of have to get working on that.
Wow, I didn't realize it was the 4th.
Yeah, coming up fast.
Boy.
Yeah, we have three meetings in January.
How fortunate are we?
And the one on the 28th, we're going to see each other so much.
I know.
Three this week.
Yeah, all right, that's right.
And a finance meeting on Wednesday.
I got meetings, I got meetings every day this week, I think.
I do, I have.
I do, too.
Three nights this week, I know.
But I do like the idea of the one year, because in a way, I think it might make it more attractive to more volunteers. You're not, it's not even a commitment, and you know, you know, you don't want to sign up for something feeling you let someone down in 18 months. So I think it could be more conducive to getting more volunteers, knowing that I'll do this for a year, and if you like it, stay on, or ask to stay on, but you know, it sort of gives you an out, you know.
Three years, three years is a big commitment for a lot.
It is, you know, hey, all of us here is, you know, it's, it's a big commitment, and it makes, it makes it more attractive, I think, for volunteers.
Yeah.
If, if you like that idea, we could introduce an ordinance tonight by title, and adopt it on the 28th, so it would be in effect for reorg.
I would totally be in favor of that.
I'm totally in favor of that as well.
As would I.
All right, let's do it.
We would like to introduce it.
So it would be an ordinance, changing the terms of all borough advisory committees to, all members of borough advisory committees to one year, and I'll submit an ordinance to Anthony tomorrow.
But if they're, or like, if they're in the second year of a three-year term, would they finish the existing term?
Yeah, reappointments. Why don't we make it reappointments, starting January 1st, 2021, borough advisory committees will be for a one-year term.
Okay, I like it.
Sorry, reappointments only? Well, otherwise, so any.
Other people have, have been appointed for longer terms, but most of the advisory committees aren't longer than three years, so you're probably only going to have people with two years left at most anyway.
The resolution, if we just say all appointments effective after January 1st, 2021, could we just say that?
Yes, but those people that have two and three-year terms won't be appointed at reorg, they're already.
Right, so we can say for anyone appointed after January 1st, 2021.
Right, we get a one-year term, yeah.
Your grandfathered in for.
Right.
The second reading will be December 28th.
Okay, so this doesn't have a number yet, correct?
Well, Anthony could probably give it to us.
Yeah, it'll be 2020-1870.
Okay, okay, so then I move to, what's the wording for that? Okay, thank you. I move to introduce ordinance 2020-1870 for all appointments as of January 2021, for members of borough advisory committees to not have a term longer than one year. And then this should be passed by?
No, a public.
Oh, introduced by title and public hearing to be held on December 28th, 2020.
Yeah.
Just when we write, when we write that resolution, now let's make it clear that they can be reappointed, because we, we're saying that shouldn't last longer than a year, but they're eligible for reappointment, which,
Yes.
by the way, since it's a one-year term, it might actually help their attendance, because they know that they want to stay on it, they, they better start showing up.
Yep.
I think it'll actually help us keep track of them, because you get on expired terms and you know, they start getting totally confused after a while, even on the statutory boards and commissions. After a while, sometimes you lose track of whose term ends when.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, this is, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nice work.
Thank you.
All right, so we do have some things for executive session, if no one else has any other business, so would someone like to move to adjourn to executive? Oh, wait, Ralph's raising his hand. You're, you're muted. Did you have something else? You're muted, oh.
I hear you. We will come out, we'll ask you to come out for, after the executive session.
Okay, so we will return to public after executive. Thank you.
Welcome.
I will move to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll let Anthony.